Alrighty, we'll call the meeting to order.
Uh, you didn't know?
Yeah, no.
Nope.
No, sorry.
Do you have a meeting, motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve agenda, ten minutes and proceed and uh, there are no other licenses.
Can I second that?
I have a motion to second it, bring it to discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Visitors, who do you free, sir?
Um. My name's Kevin Collins, and just so you don't think I have some long hair, you can get me free, I am a retired Omaha police officer. I worked for thirty years in Omaha and had an excellent reputation, one of the chief of the. I moved to Glenwood as soon as I retired three and a half years ago, because I wanted to live in peace and quiet in Calgary. I got tired of being recognized by meth addicts, I freaked, they arrested, and part of down I work, and I grew my hair long. But I, I am actually not a big drug addict, making my. So I moved down here, and then for the first few months, it was idyllic. I have three acres kinda close to the wiring, and I knew nothing about Mills County. Friends of mine found the property for me, and uh, several of my colleagues live in Mills County. It was one of them that told me about this house at Kane Avenue. So I moved in, I'm gonna get to my point quickly, but uh, first three months was excellent, there was this wonderful family that lived there. And then they moved out, the lease ran out, and these people moved in. And it's been a nightmare since then, and the reason why. I bought the house, the man let, asked me if I wanted to keep his chickens, so I said sure. So, over the next year, their dogs, they have five of them, kept killing my chickens over and over and over again. I tried to settle with them peacefully, I even asked the man, could you please, he's like, like your dogs? He smirked, rolled his eyes, and said, would you like to shoot them? I said, I don't wanna shoot them. I ended up, more chickens died, bought a shotgun, first time in my life, I still have my forty-five six hour, you know, service weapon. You can't hit a, it's hard to hit a running dog with the forty-five, and I don't wanna shoot a dog, so I bought a shotgun. And uh, this kinda ties into it, I actually, the woman that lived there, who was a meth addict and had been arrested by the Omaha police years earlier for dealing meth, which I didn't know at the time, accused me of pointing my gun at her. I actually got arrested, the deputy wrote in the report, no- nothing of what I said, only what the woman said, and arrested me for a felony assault. I swear in the Bible, my whole career, I never pointed any weapon at a person I knew was unarmed. She came outside, well, while I was trying to get a shot at the dog, but it ran back to her property. So I knew I couldn't take a shot that way, because I was trained heavily in shotguns, and anyway, she told the deputy I pointed the gun at her. And that was just a pure lie, I sent that book to a felony. NADA dropped it down eventually to a harassment, I was out twenty-two hundred dollars paying my attorney fees. He told me not to fight it, not to fight the felony, because it would cost me seven thousand dollars. So I paid the two thousand, just to get it dropped down to a misdemeanor, something I didn't do. And the deputy didn't include anything on these, on the report, wh- when I said. It was, which would have, I had a bunch of dead chickens, he rolled his eyes and smirked, and then what, and then suggested that a fox did it. And then he wrote on the report, no- no- not while being like at time point. So I buy a shotgun after that, and uh, a year later, more dead chickens, I hardly get a decent shot at the dog, and I shoot it, kill it. Sergeant Pippen shows up, and is quite polite, tells me, you should have done this a long time ago, so I wanted to avoid this. So, the woman that accused me of pointing the gun at her got, at me got, at her got, got evicted by the guy that owns the property. And uh, were saying other nasty things, not about me, but about his son that lives in the house. So the problem stopped for a while, well now, it's, it started up again, and uh, another different dog, obviously, keeps coming under my property. I've asked his brother, who now lives with him, to knock it off, stop it, I did, I want peace, and he told me, you effing pussy. So I, I can't talk to these people, I tried over and over, I, I, and I, I called, I called nine-one-one again, ironically, the same deputy showed up. He was quite polite to me this time, I'm friends with Travis Otter, who's gonna be his boss soon. So he's quite, quite pleasant to me now, no rolling of these eyes and smirking. And he, he goes over and talks to him, well, I asked him if he could cite, here's my issue, if he could cite them for anything. And he said, quite politely, on the way to my house, because I'd had, I'd had, had to call several or eight times in the interim, bitter deputy showed up. And he called, talked to NADA, and NADA told him, you tell me to go to this meeting and ask you people, if you can do something about a dog at large law. So, the deputies can cite the people, and I'm thinking, because I found this quite, pretty quite effective in my career, that he cites people for certain, whatever. They don't, they'll tend to stop doing it, because they're getting it in a pocketbook. That's it. And somehow, some way, this could end by maybe just one citation, but I'm actually worried now, that it's, it's gonna get worse and worse. Because they started screening things out, hey, when, when the de- soon as the deputy left. Oh, on the, the, that night I shot the dog, the husband showed up. Minutes later, he got, must've got off work early, screeched into my driveway, his truck, got out, and he told me, you better think about moving right now. I made a threat report, which looks like it didn't go anywhere. Because in the threat statute, at least in Douglas County in Omaha, you had to be a specific threat, I had to say, I'm gonna cut your head off. I'd like to say you're gonna get it on these days, they don't, county attorney wouldn't consider that a threat. So you have to be, so maybe that's why nothing happened, because you have to have to say something specifically, or I'm gonna blow your house up. So, that's, that's where I stand, I mean, I'm scared, I'm actually scared to live in my house now.
Do you have a fence to keep those chickens in?
No, 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 I, I actually have, I, I free raised them the whole time. If you, sunlight property, this would help, it's quite large. My chickens actually stay, it's, it's probably a hundred yards, they stay by these huge livestock bushes, the hawks, eagles, don't forget them. I, I found out chickens actually are pretty clever that way, they can't be seen from, uh, predator birds. So they stay there the whole day, they don't even get, the stomach has to run across my whole property to get to the chickens, to chase them and kill them. And also, the fence would absolutely, it would have to be about three hundred yards long, I don't, I've never priced a fence, I've heard about three hundred. Does anybody else know, does anyone know South Farmland, three hundred yards of, of building a fence? It's like, it would, it would have to go around my whole property, it would be quite expensive, when really, all that man has to do is pin his dogs up. And then the problem goes away, but he's, he's not going to, it's happened dozens of times, so.
So do the other neighbors, do they complain of?
The, I had this one really terrific neighbor, the best neighbor I've ever had in my life, and the dogs could see my chickens in the distance. He, we're, we're quite a distance apart, I live on Kane Avenue, and it's, and it's.
Where is it?
Oh, two four seven three six, yeah, oh, excellent, uh, this is, wait, yeah, this is me, this is where my chickens are at. This is the, wait a minute.
Yours is.
No, no, here I am, yeah, this is their property, so what, my, my outbuilding is right here, my chickens hang out right here. The dog has to run all the way across, I'd, so I'd have to put a fence, so this dog couldn't see them, I mean, there's probably more than three hundred yards, it's probably, so it would be quite.
Could you put a fence just right around that shed, instead of your whole property? I'm just saying, because I raise a lot of livestock and chickens and birds and, or put up a, a netario, or, no, a, what do you call it?
Oh, I know atria.
Atria.
Well, I said, well, the chickens can, some of, I have these four chickens that were on the endangered species list a couple of years ago, I don't know if they still are, that's why I look at this, it's just more, I have four different species of chickens, I kinda. Actually, I got rid of them for a while, I gave them to somebody in trainers, so I wouldn't have to deal with this, and I kinda missed it. So I got these kind of exotic chickens, uh, and they can fly almost like a pheasant, so I'd have to build a fence, I guess I could.
Something to think about, because then if the dogs got into.
Oh, they could have, yeah, they would be able to get into it. That probably wouldn't be nearly as expensive, well, no, definitely wouldn't be nearly as expensive.
Exactly.
Okay?
Exactly. Just an idea, but I, I mean, if the other neighbors complain of his job's roaming, I mean, we're not solving a problem, but I understand.
No, oh, no, right, well, the, the, the nice neighbor, this guy here, best guy I've ever met, aren't they? So friendly, and he says the, he said the, the dog, the two of the dogs are killing my, my chickens, never ever entered his property once. Because they have to, because, you know, they don't see his, his livestock down here, they said, they, that's a matter, that's why they don't go on his property. So, oh, you know what, uh, I could just, I could see how much it would cost, it wouldn't have to be that big, it'd have to be.
And.
Tall, I don't know, do they make, do they make chain link that tall though, like how tall?
Yeah, we put a net, because we raise peacocks and such.
My stepdad does that.
And it, it truly works, I mean, he keep the coons out, so. Is that Tim or uh, Jay, Chase, that your neighbor?
Yes.
Okay.
And uh, it's not going bad.
Okay.
And his mom called me yesterday, crying, he did something, I don't even wanna say.
Okay.
Yesterday, I don't wanna say, because it's a personal thing, and it's, she confided in me, but it's, I'm, I'm actually scared now.
Yeah.
Yeah, things are not going well, I even took a picture of the property, his property, you saw, what, you saw. Now that you bring it up, I don't, I don't, careful mention this, what, what I see, you would think something's wrong here, seriously wrong. And uh, it's, I'm scared, I'm actually gonna go to an attor- I was gonna go to an attorney after this, see about fighting a lawsuit. But after what she told me last night, I'm afraid to do that now, to, to dispel stuff. I actually wasn't even gonna come here, but I thought, well, you, you, even the honor, that might, per character name, Mike Sayman Carroll, might think, well, why did you waste my time? So I thought, I'm just gonna, I, oh, I go to, I go to the gym every morning, that's why I look like this, why, why, I, I, every morning eight-thirty, I meet a friend of mine named Steve there. And we work out, so I, so I came like this, because I'm supposed to be meeting here in a few minutes, but, well, you know the Chases? Tim and his wife Gail like me a great deal, uh, Tim, not even ever asking him, um, shovels my tri weight when it snows every winter, just he's extremely pleasant. And, but uh, oh boy, and then his brother moved in, he was one of the screening the profanities at me. So, it's just been an awful experience.
So, my suggestion, Kevin, for now, until we can talk about this, to save your chickens.
Yeah.
Build something.
Yeah, right, that probably will, will be probably.
And then you've got more of a control of, of.
Yeah.
But I, I know what dogs now you're talking about. Yeah.
The one I shot two years ago was a, right, uh, type of layout, that was the woman that was throwing all the damage, so. And uh, I actually, I actually told the deputy, I have to say this, I'm sorry, because this hurts me, this was the worst day of my life getting arrested. I told that man, I saw, I got home, I not secured the door, well enough, two of the dogs, a little one named Romeo, and I don't know what them biting was, were in my coop killing my chickens. I told that deputy that, her dogs, they were following her, and it, he wrote in the report, Collins saw a dog run across the yard. Which makes me look like, did the county attorney reading the report alluded him? He also, when I told him, there was, I got four dead bleeding chickens in my yard right now, he told, he smirked, rolled his eyes. Smirked and rolled his eyes at me, and, and said, how do you know a fox is gonna do it? And he, he didn't put any of that in the report, which, which, that's why I had to shut it out there, but none of that was mentioned. So it just made me look like a lunatic, and I gotta tell you, after thirty years of being a cop, never shooting a dog, never pointing a gun at a, at a person, I deeply resent it now. I told Kim Clark, but he did, and I don't know if anything was done, so, I'm, I'm pretty bitter about that.
Well, I would tell you the, the easiest and the quickest way you can solve part of it is, we've been on our place, we know my uh, bell panels.
Yeah.
Panels, you can buy one with a gate in it, buy three or four more and hook them together, and they're, and they're sturdy enough that you, you want to, you put a net over the top, because it'll hold it. Put together, that, that's the quickest thing you can build right now.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, I, I could keep them in there, the, actually, that building is their, I have, goes down, that, that's their, their coop. I could keep them in the building all day, until, I, I like, yeah, I can feel stupid for not having thought about that. But it would, yeah, it'd have to be pretty tall.
Yeah, it would help, I mean.
I mean, do they literally make chain link fence that tall?
This is six foot tall.
Yeah, well, the, those exotic birds, like I said, they, they go like feathers, I mean, they can go.
I know.
You can buy shooting things, I mean, they're ten feet tall, but they're expensive.
There's a.
Oh, well then.
There's a, man, go, go online, and I, it's the net.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
Exactly.
So just come, just get a six foot, cover the net, don't worry about it.
You know what, can, and we put a pole in the middle, and.
No, all of that.
Oh, so they have a, kind of like an atrium at the zoo.
Exactly. You got it.
Uh.
It would be, they would think they'd be in a holiday setting.
Well, I'll go to farm parks later, so.
But try that until we can get this solved.
Okay, thank you, well, thanks for listening to my little dive right, but I, I just felt peace.
Good to hear, Kevin, thank you for coming in, and, and we understand, this could be, you know, a lot of people are gonna start moving out into the country, and they gotta understand.
Yeah.
You have dogs, you've gotta.
Yeah, these people don't.
You've gotta be responsible for it.
Tim and Gail care, Jake does not.
Yeah. Yeah.
Does not care.
Yeah. And you still understand.
Anyway. All right, well, thanks for your time.
Thanks for coming in, Kevin.
Thank you for your time.
You can stay if you want.
Oh, no, I had to get to the gym, I do that scary attire, everything like religious, so, bye.
Thank you, nice meeting you.
You too, bye.
Larry, two of you are.
I got one.
So it hit our gerson.
It did.
We have an outbreak in our long-term care, one even had four residents test positive and two staff members. They are mandated to do that rapid testing, and they're mandated to do it quite frequently. So they have a rapid tester, but they don't have enough supplies to meet CMS's requirements for the frequency of testing, so.
So it's trying, what is a rapid test?
They're trying to navigate. They get results in fifteen minutes.
We do?
Yeah, so, that's a good thing, because you can keep on talking things better, and better controls and isolating the ones that's positive. Uh, we do have a total confirmed case of a hundred forty-nine positives, a hundred twelve of those are recovered. Our fourteen positivity, fourteen day positivity rating is seven point O. You can also see our age ranges, almost exclusively, we report individuals between nineteen and sixteen showing. So that's an update for you, and I'm hoping to get questions about that. We need to work closely with schools, we're trying to plan for fall events. Public health needs to be every downer, we'll all revise one month a year about large gatherings. Uh, our first, um, first thing that we say about large gatherings is that they're ill-advised, we're trying to get larger, we need people together, coming from all over, standing in close proximity. First, to save, try, you know, might need to accelerate the spread of COVID-19. So at this time, those expectations are being advised, however, they are not in the hope, Governor Reynolds has said that in gathering groups like that, as long as we put those public health measures into play, particularly, you have to set up a built environment, so individuals can have, um, physical distance, slow spread, so. We're doing a lot of messaging with our school districts and our community partners, if they choose to go ahead and tackle this, that's just basic parameters they can set. Does that cover that, is there anything else?
Uh, just the long-term care requirement, they're pushing, what it needs, um, plenty of village, they have some assistance, you know, systems like that, so we're trying to watch that. Of course, we're trying to keep it out of school, we have trouble sourcing resources, and so, like, they're still tough to find, and sometimes they're on those. Uh, nitric gloves seems to be a hot topic, and they're available, if they are available, the high cost, and then some sizes aren't available, and then we're trying to. The gas usage rate, we're trying to figure out, we're having a high burn rate, we need us to post patients, so we're trying to help with that. We're asking us resources, and we'll, we'll stay and, well, we'll be required, we'll, we'll support that.
Are you having problems getting your supplies ready?
I'm, I'm, I'm.
It's really discouraging, I mean, they got a shipment of FEMA hounds, and they're like, they're light heavy bags, they're like garbage bags, they're, they're, they're not the quality of PPE that you're born, you know. And they're not adverse to using them, and if they have to, they will, but Larry has been able to find your standard, you know, healthcare professionals should have access to.
For career purposes, um, the schools, of course, the grade prep is, you all know, and uh, they ask for, uh, chief of health and health professional support. Um, which, uh, may, so, so we're trying to support that, and we're trying to, you know, we agree with everyone, we're seeing a lot of, of issues or whatever. We've done a couple more classes, and officially, we're, we're beginning to move on to the last week, and of course, the grade chairman said there was no classes, we're closing the grade, so, they were told. Uh, so, we'll be tops, it's gonna see all, all things out, uh, that goes on, and last night, I got an email or a text from the app, like, they're going to be asking for calls. Uh, they're going to do, they're going to advance, which superintendent, so we could, you know, the school district, you know, um, uh, this kid, so, whatever, you know, they segregate modules, which is like, uh, out, or somehow they're managing that, keeping them with their own, well, so, so he's wanting to, uh, uh, see how they act alive. He's, he's sawed his, like, crossing through, that we have, and keep them on a rope, or, or take through them, segregate some of the supply, you know?
Were they up to that for dance?
He and Zoe, but, well, Phil's probably really likely to brace unless he knows how to do it. And so, uh, uh, I think we could end up there, which, it should be interesting to see how they supervise that, because, uh, um, you know, it's tough to supervise things. It's really tough, when you walk down the air, or some, halfway, like, you know, try to do the best you can, but then you don't see enough surveillance areas, so. It's just something that's, it's really hard to do, I think, in a larger, we're trying to live in, so I hope they're doing their best job, you know? Uh, the, Julie just gave the conference call to me recently, I couldn't participate, it had to do with, uh, some of the grants and decorations. One of those public systems came up for nineteen, uh, came up, and you cut that off on the fifteenth, which is today, and, and basically, things like court hours in schools, things like that. Uh, and we're correct, if I'm wrong here, uh, it looks like we're gonna allow you to claim that, when you have, uh, I call it CATB, recovery B, or emergency protection measure supplies. The thing is dealing with hospitals, health services, uh, long-term care, uh, emergency medical services, you know, things like that, where you're caring for people. Uh, that, what is going to be, as far as right now, supported, it's just that you may close out on the fifteenth, and then you'll start a new, uh, application, fifteenth, sixteenth on. So, I would think the school nurse would call in that, I don't know. So we're gonna have to check on that with, uh, the state, the state, again, with Lane Hill, which created nineteen, it was asked the states to play their role, in addition to the state role. So, when Julie picked up on the conference call, it looks like they're gonna expedite, uh, the, the processing of those players, and turnaround of, of the funding for, uh, for authorized purchases, so that's gonna be getting way back in the hoppers, then the extended, uh, research, and allow the, uh, exchange. There's some changes.
It's, it's pretty significant, the theme of the later handle of COVID is different than, I just finished up with FEMA on Friday, with flood recovery. We actually closed the case and did the final report, and that was on Friday. According to, um, the individual that I'm working with for the FEMA, they say that they're doing it in, um, maybe say, thirty to forty-five days turnaround. Um, he is suggesting that FEMA for COVID, for the months of March through September fifteenth, be turned in, they were mentioning a lot of what they would pay, starting September fifteenth, they were really just paying for healthcare, hospitals, for that patient care, so that's a big shift.
Right, so, um, so now. So they did this from sixteenth on, it's kind of like before we opened up the windows, no nation, you know?
They, they, they're strict, they are, they're strict.
They are now, they appreciate more, they can't be shut down.
Civic healthcare. And then we do this as public health, and, oh, I, I had feelings, I mean, you know, everybody's willing, really gonna have to stop, you know, handle disasters, we're in recovery, we're in recovery, it's slowly leading out, right?
Right.
So, but we're still responding, at the same time, so this is unique disaster, it's different than any one, anybody's experience now.
Took CARES update for you, um, you know, that, that line for submitting the CARES act this day. And we did submit that, and I'm working with a gentleman, Mr. Leon, and he, um, is following up with some additional supporting documentation. And I spoke with Carol, and with Freddie Carroll, and he pointed out that we could increase our labor cost by just under seventeen thousand dollars. That twenty-five percent deemed labor cost for public health. Caroline is in, and we will be increasing that amount by just over seventeen thousand dollars. That does not change the mass of the first, and it's just one ninety-one.
And we have the twenty thousand that we need to afford to prove here, less than before last, a little less than twenty thousand, so. That's the size of the journey on fifteen, right?
So, anyway, that's, that's underway, and I, they wanna, we work on this, and if I meet them, no problem.
And Carol, you had your part of that, you had some stuff, so is that what's happening?
Yeah, it's a question, I guess.
Well, I don't have anything to my stuff, so, I'm like yours.
That's what, that's what I knew, so, so, I think our present goal is to change five thousand, so change, and if we add from first mission, someone out there. And then I assume that, that, that we all here, uh, uh, authorize expansion, so, yeah, we would, uh, so to get it in this, well, and, and have all those numbers together, so we offer others to everything, we're up to us.
Yeah, so we don't have to sit up. Any questions or concerns, I think?
No, I understand the question.
Okay, uh, the one in form is Carol, you need amendments, and I, I have amendments, um. I don't have a lot of support to, I mean, I just need to do some budget, and I wanna run for, and I, I need your help. It would be helpful to me, is there any, can I write to me, if I have that, or process at county level? I tend to, I tend to learn well by reading, I, if I understand rules, I.
Yeah, operate within them.
We don't ha- I mean, we have a form that we fill out, but it, I mean, it's the one I do, because it goes, coincides with the budget, but tentatively, the goal is to offset your expenditures with revenues that increase.
Right, and for this particular year, I feel like our budget is all over the place, and I'm gonna have significantly more money coming in from some avenues. And I have big pockets, and I'm sitting there that I can't, I can spend due to COVID-19, and I'm just wondering how that balances out on a monthly basis, like my reports, my board of health. And I'm twenty-six percent in the year, and I'll be twenty-six percent expended, and I want everything to line up. I'm gonna be spending five here, I need to pick more brain, or when I add all these dollars in, when I leave all the costs up, I'm gonna spend it. I want to be very transparent with you in the budget process, and I want to be able to answer all questions, but that could give percentages of revenue.
I was gonna say, I think we need to work on some different line items, because I think we've got too much going in the money area, that I think we need to be signifying and out, so that we can actually see where those costs are.
See, okay. We can, we can spend money on that later and we can take a break. Uh flu shots.
Oh.
Public health is busy, so um other than COVID nineteen, we are really trying to push out that flu shots are more important this season. Even if you sort of do not have flu shots in your past, because of COVID nineteen, getting your flu shot would be very important. Flu shot doesn't address COVID nineteen, I think it helps you if you get sick, you can kind of overlook it. Public health is interested in partnering with any entity to help make that easier. So if we can offer flu shots to county employees, if we can show up and make that process easier and example, if we have.
Well, since we used to be able to do that, but our health insurance won't let us do that anymore. Because it has to be, because it's covered under our insurance and so it has to be billed to our insurance, so.
Yes, yes, but I would like you to think public health is a gap filler. So if if you have people that are, if our liability not to be.
Well, it's, well, the insurance will pay if you don't get it.
So you've gotta go to the doctor's office.
No, you don't have to go to the doctor's office, you go to HIG, you go to a number, it's.
They charge your insurance, your insurance will pay for it.
But it's whoever has, whoever takes you to the shot has to file a bill on your insurance, that's the kicker. So you might wanna check our insurance.
We can, what I was gonna say, can you?
We can bill Medicare, so we're looking for all individuals who are sixty or older. And anything we can do to even if they don't wanna go out and they don't, I mean, we will, we will come to it down your door.
Sure. It's trying to get people to get the shot and and we just want those scenarios. There's only these scenarios in our healthcare provider, we need to.
I get twenty cents and yes, and I need to have to find my.
I know, and as long as you go, we're happy. But if there's a barrier to getting that done, anything that public health can do to help, but. We're also working very closely with the state on um protocol for COVID vaccine access. And that will be rolling out before the end of this year.
I'd I'd like to bring in here, I had mental health reason yesterday and we got one point seven million dollars to extend to whoever we could count. And so we contacted all the schools in our nine counties, which I think is twenty-six. And asked them to reply. And we end up with twenty-five schools called back. Cause I was kind of shocked at it, gee, if you got a chance to pay for things or get extra help to buy things that you need. You know, you have thirty twenty schools, didn't even, didn't even take the time to call, ask or anything, but uh.
Is there uh obviously certain guidelines, things that you can.
Yeah, oh yeah, it gets, it gets uh, it's not even, it's not even better than what yours is as far as guideline that you can do with it. I mean, uh they're they're gonna buy, obviously buy the stuff that some schools are short on, that's the main thing. Uh we can even, I don't know how we do this, we could even help with like the nurses at the school, their old china or anything like that. We can help with that. Uh that that I don't, we didn't get into the deep particular though because.
Do you reach out to?
I wonder if whatever.
Yeah, everybody was contacted. All the schools were contacted.
Hope the right people in Mills heard that because the the school nurses are so overwhelmed. You have no idea how much their job is right now. If a child presents with two low risk symptoms, there's a whole implementation thing that they have to do. When you think about that, cough and ready nose, cough and ready nose are low risk symptoms.
How many kids, I mean, when you got two thousand kids coming to school, this is where allergies go up right now, you're pretty wicked.
Yeah, you've got school nurses working around the clock, they could get any kind of support.
Well, I'd say that's something they're working on. Uh one thing we was asking, I I had never really paid much attention to it. They was wanting to know if they qualify for hazardous pay.
Hazardous pay.
Yes. Can we get it through? What, all the supervisors sat there, we looked at Suzanne, says, well, don't we qualify? You know, no, you're you're law enforcement, you're re- first responders, everybody's looking at this hazardous pay part. I'm going, wait a minute, folks. If you're in this field, hazardous is hazardous. I mean, so we had quite a little bit of discussion on that. Just some things that come up that I had never, you know.
That's really useful.
Yeah.
I think elections.
Here we find it. Yeah, thank you, babe.
I stopped, you know, you might say something to Devin if you need or something.
Who would you reach out to?
Suzanne wanted. Sure, he can call me.
Alright, thank you much, thank you guys.
Support.
Hey, time for me. Instruction is here.
Can you just bring donuts or anything?
Oh, we're gonna, sorry.
Or that cover.
Okay, so we're putting up some I am right. Finding agenda items, variable agreement, agreement, attend them, but instruction. Information is are here. We had signed the agreements two weeks ago. As far as liability and identification and credit voyage usage. Not saying we need more parts in the dendum, kind of, we weren't here two weeks ago, made of I assume Phil Gian. We agreed to have an addendum for surcharge fee that we're still uh negotiating on. Um we've got a couple letters sent before. We got a copy of the letter in response, that was sent September third. That was county board surprise or something. And it's kind of where we're at right now. Or I didn't know if you guys received the letter or had a response for it, or if uh.
So.
Where your names is at right now.
Yeah, we received, is this a, I guess, reading through, is this a, I guess, rejection of the reduction of the surcharge amount? I guess that was never formally stated in there. Is that?
It's not a, I wouldn't say it's, no, it's not gonna reduce it at all, no, it's not what it says.
Okay, but it's a, is it a rejection of the reduction to five cents?
Yeah, we told you that's the first time.
Okay. Um. I guess, so I, that was the only question I really had, I wasn't really sure, just reading through the letter. Um under- I understand language written in the letter and why you're at on your guys' stance on the situation, I guess. What do we gotta do to come to an agreeable number? Do we have to uh, is, do we have to provide some additional information on why we think it should be reduced to where it should be? Or I guess.
I wouldn't go through that much effort. Last I thought, two times ago, I thought you guys were gonna go back with a different offer and I think you guys said, no, we're going five cents, it kind of just cut me off guard, I really thought we would get somewhere between.
Yeah.
I mean, I understand the thirty-five cents, I get that, I mean, you're not gonna be trucking that much, that much soil. You're sort of heavy equipment, when the conveyor's in and out, you're sort of gonna be trucks maintaining them, there's still gonna be some heavy truck traffic, whether it be on the dirt or to maintain the system, so.
Yeah, so I, when I went back to vice president to rewrite the letter and look at um what our offer should be according to just the the cents part, portion of it. I I took, kind of, we took all the traffic we were gonna have and then now all the traffic that's gonna be there. We kind of just did a percent, we figured, okay, well, now that we have X percent of traffic rather than what we planned on, let's just go with that number. When you do that, it's like three tenths of a cent. And I, and I knew that was unacceptable, so that's why we stayed at five cents. Cause at five cents, it's about right around like a thousand dollars a day we'll be paying. And that's just to have our pickups running up and down the road, I mean, there shouldn't be really any heavy truck traffic until we go to pick it all back up. It should just be pickups and side by sides, I mean, there's no fuel, it's all electric, so you won't have big fuel trucks. Just have our our maintenance guys operate in a little can and buggies with welders on it. And the only time they're on the road really is when they cross it to the other side. No, so, I mean, that, that, we didn't come up back to five cents to try to stip in one or anything.
Sure.
When we actually ran the numbers, which I don't have in front of me, which could produce, but when you run the numbers, the the percentage of impact now versus running all the trucks, it came up to less than five cents, so that's, that's why we stayed in five cents.
You know, what I have a problem with, here we are in the middle of, not, maybe not in the middle, but of your operation and we're talking about trying to make it an agreement. You knew what the cost of this project was gonna be when you came into it, surely you knew that. And you knew that we charged thirty-five cents a yard for extraction fee. I mean, you, you know that. We have contractors that work down here on the levee during the flood and stuff, that paid the thirty-five cents and never touched our roads. One time their trucks touched the road was going in and out for fuel in the morning and night, that's it, didn't take any load. So I have a problem, we charged them thirty-five cents, they never touched the roads, you say, you're not touching the road. Sure, but you wanna pay a penny nickel, which gives us nothing. You know, uh we've been to court, lost court battles and things over extraction fees years ago. Neither one of these people were on the board when I was on it. Uh that's the reason we came up with this, you know, to uh more or less control what's going on. But I'm not saying that maybe you should pay the whole thirty-five cents, but you you still have to respect what we have to do down here. Mainly thing I'm upset is you guys have been running for how long? With trucks and the conveyor, you know, but maybe only a week or so on the conveyor, but uh now we're gonna sit here and argue over what you think you should pay and what we should give into and.
Thirty-five cents a yard, correct?
What's that?
The trucking.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
When you bid this project, did you not bid with the thirty-five cents in with this? So now we wanna pull out after we get the belts rolling?
We didn't bid with the conveyor.
You didn't bid it with the conveyor, you bid it with all the trucking.
Yep. Our conveyor, our conveyor and operations side of things comes from all west, from another division of our company, which this information might not be of most use for. But it comes out west and just happened to fall in line or a bunch of equipment freed up at just the right time. And they just sent it all this way for us to use, cause it's already named, named all. So it was, it was, it was our intention to truck everything and I mean, when do we start the permit process for the conveyor?
March.
End of March, April.
We finally knew that equipment was gonna be able to come here.
Yep, so. How many yards you gonna, where you gonna convey it, roughly?
Oh, three million.
Five million.
I thought it was eight point five.
Yeah, that's a ton. Tonnage.
Have around fifteen thousand dollars today.
I would say fifteen, eighteen thousand dollars today.
Well, I'm just saying that the other dirt haulers have called me and they're saying, if we let you guys get by, we'll go to court with the others, because like Richard said, there was some that never touched our roads and they paid the thirty-five cents. And they said they will be pissed beca- and they'll say, you know what, we'll see you in court. And then we gotta pay them thousands and thousands and thousands because we let them get by. You know, we're, we're a county that tries to do the same for all. And like Richard said, they never touched our roads and they pay because it's an extraction fee. So I I'm just saying, I don't wanna go to court, I I think you guys realize this is what happens. Um you're taking a big chunk out of Mills County, that's for sure. Um and I just think thirty-five cents is heavily of.
So it's a big number in the long, in the whole scope of things. And I understand you're gonna have an expense for your conveyor belt, whether you own it or not, you gotta get here, you gotta maintain it, you gotta give appreciation, I mean, there's several other factors I don't even know about, you know, I get that part of it, but it's, it's all, and you guys don't want nothing, it's, I would like to meet somewhere in between. And avoid all this, put it to bed, move on, get our jobs done.
Do you know utilities?
Yeah.
Are you bored? Then it talks with uh with uh Vanish Point Western Iowa Networks, is your perm, um so it's a fiber installation, utility permit soon, I believe.
Yay.
Moves on forward to my transaction item, approval, application eleven, Genesis Contracting, construction, account building for the amount of two hundred fifty-four thousand seven hundred ninety dollars. Most of this is for um we have H VAC, electrical, fire protection, a lot of utilities and yeah, drywall. And here's my.
So does it start to look like offices or just?
Drywall is going a little slow.
Okay.
Um uh but but all the utilities, mechanical is corrupted. Uh all the interior paving's done, we got a progress meeting actually at ten thirty this morning, so do a little laundry with that, which I afterwards. Um exterior paving expected here in the next couple of weeks, so um really, really come together. Maybe a little bit behind the schedule now, but we we've been kind of looking at the, sending them up to work and event before moving in. I don't think it's gonna change much, I I told, told uh this public health December, just to make sure we're ourselves any time. I'm starting with the other.
After Christmas, right, after Christmas?
So looking for approval for FEMA.
Will I make a motion to pay Genesis Contracting? Two hundred fifty-four thousand seven nine oh, no sense.
Seven.
The motion is second to approve pay application eleven with Genesis Contracting for two five four seven nine zero. Is there any discussion? Are you in all of the favor?
I.
We are twenty-two thousand of your budget currently on it.
Yay.
Uh general discussion, I have a couple small pieces of equipment. I know we've been on the first year in the next couple of weeks. Um talked to you guys in the past about both of these pieces of equipment, one, a solar retriever, gravel retriever, just set on the side of a maintainer for greater, basically disc, we we handled it. Really like how it works, uh maybe get some good use out of it.
Hold some knockup, did it?
Yep, we have to look for a loan, we can look at so. Uh that'll probably bring that in front of you, but it is a sixteen thousand five hundred dollar equipment. Zig zig it.
And that is attached to the blade of the maintainer?
To the, to the maintainer's uh side hydraulic, so.
Oh, to the side hydraulic, oh, okay. So we're gonna share, I mean, how are we, you're just buying one.
Buying one and we'll rotate it through our.
Okay.
Uh search grater attachment, how about that? Grater. How about put a throw a disc in there as well?
Yeah, SC or K?
K, K. K K. Yeah, there you go, that's what it looks like.
We used to have one.
Washington politicians and their special interest friends like to call idle flyover companies. Honestly.
Factory I was running on wouldn't, couldn't get hot. Having enough pass because you transmission while running.
Wow, two in a row.
Yeah, it was usually three or four, yeah.
About ready to do a free trial of three.
Yeah. Just to see.
Very wonderful thing, I just wanna get that, I just wanna see.
It's pretty cool.
How it works.
This is something you're coming back with.
Yeah, the solution, it's called the Retriever, simple yet incredibly effective.
That goes with a stone bed.
No, right. It will be a single head jar, it won't go off.
Is that a, is that a brush?
No, big heavy disc, yeah, just a disc, you know. So what what's that like for?
The Retriever is looking to conquer the most different shoulder conditioning problems.
And when you use it on our paved roads and on our gravel roads, we'll probably primarily.
If I have real conversion there.
Because on the paved road, it's not that close, so it more needs to pay.
Yeah, no, we don't, we don't, we don't want it close to it.
Say goodbye to the rules of sod form when using the blade, the retriever will use it to the most.
Yeah.
But it looks like, it looks like it chops up the grass pretty well, so it's a lot better than the big chunks that the maintainer.
Yep. True, so I'll be bringing that here in the next number two. Maybe that's both, they quit. And then the other piece of.
I don't make sense, I'm sorry.
Uh, cap.
Okay.
And then the other piece of equipment we've discussed before is the culvert planer.
I thought you got.
We never did.
Oh, okay, I see.
Goes on a ta- we attach it to any backhoe or excavator that we have. And have we can get an extension, I think two six foot extensions, so we could reach. So it happens. Let's be excited with it, you'd be able to reach like twenty-four feet and it's really helpful. Any of the culvert that gets here and spin, we can just try and clean out instead of having to replace them. Give it a little more life, so the culverts can still then throw off instead of having to hang up. And it's just under four thousand, it's just under thirty-five thousand. Some more smaller purchases that I think we can just do.
But is that the length that we're getting through the other side of the culvert?
So so we probably we probably get like halfway and half through the other side. Couple of different hooks or panels.
This is general discussion, this.
Yep, just general discussion, what you guys can.
I'll just tell the guy skid loaders do not look.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was.
Pretty versatile space.
Picturing that in my mind, driving a skid chair to the. Yeah, those are, yeah, those are very fun, those are our cogs. Yeah. Um, the only other thing I've brought in discussion is we are opening a hundred ninety street today. And we got we got the painting done yesterday.
Wow.
Back to the comm center, they should be removing beach recidage um this week, we can open it. Beach recidage on there.
We should have had a ribbon cutting or band plan or something, this has just been a.
Not gonna get all the money.
This has been a long process.
Speaking of money for a hundred ninety street FEMA, uh, they pushed it to me for review, I approved or did my review. It was the same amount I requested, so now it just has to be obligated, so. Uh, it is from the last state before we get it, and so it's it's there, I mean, so.
So close you couldn't touch it.
Free Bay County didn't, they didn't get any on their project.
Maybe they have a persistent.
They said we're not paying, I mean they approved it, they have it in writing that they approved it, yet they won't pay.
Yeah, well, how many times is period back in the day?
Yeah, I mean.
I'm I'm every time we've gotten to this point, all of our other team of pressure's too down there, so.
Well, I mean.
Doesn't change for us.
That's that's what's, you know.
Yeah, it's not, but we're we're close, so.
Oh, Cory. Do you know how much that is, Cory?
Uh, six hundred and sixty some.
Okay, because.
The federal share is like four hundred ninety-five thousand, so it's at a hundred percent.
Okay, and the only reason I ask that is because those dollars come in ACH a lot of times to Jill and then she's like, is this yours, is this yours? So if I kinda know the dollar amount, that'll be.
I have no dollars, yeah, and will six hundred and sixty-seven thousand change or something? Yeah, and and federal share is seventy-five percent.
So, okay, I'll be.
State share then would be ten, ten fifty percent. Total share, so, uh, and we will, we'll have to do the, I'm about doing the budget amendment this month or next.
Right.
Because we'll wait till we get it, and then we'll actually change to that money into our ethnic that will rework, studying all that.
How, I don't, I guess I don't really need to know how you're gonna draft for your ethnic or whatever.
There's a lot of money for D O T, so.
Um, okay.
Don't worry, I know.
That's on your side, I'm not gonna worry.
Yeah, but since since we're expecting out of the economic panel, we should fill out.
So do we have to?
Yeah.
So do we have to pay a flagman a little more times or is he done?
Uh, we have two more, two more invoices to base for the flagman, plus one more day, we have to get their CD for the license.
Oh, Cory.
And that'll be sooner or later. Wait, wait one more day.
Oh, alright.
I don't know, I have business.
Yeah.
We are.
I guess talking about FEMA, I did do an update on our appeals uh for the junky bridge damage.
We are.
And so I sent in our letter to I will hold it for you, and they have moved it forward and they're submitting that to FEMA this week. The FEMA has ninety days for this, not a lot of days. Perfectly, kind of deal.
Yeah.
And then it's then it's just the management costs.
You're used to that.
We're gonna see what for two thousand nine.
Yeah, for two thousand nine. Hopefully it'll play for the next twenty years.
Right, yeah.
Uh.
But Kudus taking a great job.
Yeah, uh. L fifty-five widening reserves starting this week, so they should be out there tomorrow.
Oh, you got good weather for that?
They were supposed to last week, but the rain. Post hold up, and then uh we are carrying up, we're doing the reclamation on our ninth district, uh, this week, and then we'll put the issue off.
What we got going on?
Oh.
Uh, we could stay on a little patch rock on Key Lally. That's what comes straight on the north side of Malvern, like straight toward two seventy-five.
So west of two seventy-five?
Yep. Really west of two hundred and eighty street, or east of two hundred and eighty street.
Oh, okay.
What are they doing on thirty-four right now that we have the stoplight signal?
They're working on the overhead bridge.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, cut me twice this time.
It's a real pain in the backside.
They need to prove that they need to leave the green light a little bit longer.
There was about twelve vehicles leaving with the green light, and it turned green, there was about twelve vehicles behind me. I don't remember the people on the other end, they've got a green light or not, but.
I don't know, but people come in from, from Fremont, and we um aren't liking this because usually there's a little whirl of a break going through when they can get in and out, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Big Cory, thanks guys.
Right.
All right, the next item on the agenda is authorize the chair to sign the national disaster recovery project intent to obligate construction funds.
Yeah, it's very similar to last week's deal, this one is for the climate based, for the mission bottom watershed, W N, that was three seven, Evans, and W N four five six, climate, main stabilization. Um, the engineer's estimation of funds to be obligated is seventy, seventy thousand.
So I'll make that motion.
I second it.
We've got a motion and a second to approve, authorize the chair to sign the national disaster recovery project intent to obligate construction funds, is there any discussion? Are you in all was in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Yes, that's it, thank you.
Honest, you ladies can move up from behind the screen.
Yeah, I'm really sorry about that, we tried to come up with a tie, and we tried earlier, and they still had a board meeting at ten,
No, 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 we could.
The whole picture.
So we couldn't do it at ten, and we tried earlier, and that wasn't gonna work, and then it was just like a mess, and finally said, okay, what time do you think it'll be out? And then finally I got some, out by luck, and said, okay, and we're doing it all.
Uh, canvass the middle of Silver City's special election.
Yeah, that's, um, yeah. We go draft. Twenty-five people to vote.
Those are twenty-five, I think it's twenty-five.
Yeah, we have twenty-five, because we have three absentees and we're also, we have to get, we go draft, that's results.
Okay.
This is draft, um, we had twenty-two at the polls and three um absentees, of which Tom Bane received five votes and Darren Gray received five votes. So those two, we had to to draw in that one, and so Tom Bane um was drawn, so he will receive um that position, and the other one, Julia Dambro, she received six, and then Anna Gorman was next. So the two new council people will be Julia Dambro, who will fill the um vacancy total for the one, and Tom Bane will fill the vacancy total for the one. So I'm gonna have the chair to sign, and I'll be, I'll be.
I love you.
Uh-huh. So I'll have to assign the chair to make a choice later, but she could have a surprise, yeah. So basically, how much did this cost, seriously? Well, we don't have all the things, we saved them money because we made our own, we made ballots. We only, we had two people there and then Lori and I went and counted them. But we had to keep the polls open all day, so from seven to eight, so there's three hundred dollars there. Um, plus um paper and it's not gonna be huge for them, but hopefully maybe they'll get an introduction to move it soon, and let us know when they come to the seat, so we can do the election.
Well, sometimes we have to worry about these things, right?
Three, three, how many you need? So you think guys, we approve this?
Oh, I make a motion to approve Julia Dambro and Tom Bane to be on the city council of Silver City.
Second.
The motion is second, and we're approving the canvas of the Silver City special election, is there any other discussion? Are you in all was in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Just some copies.
I don't know copies, I don't know, actually, there's four copies.
So I, this, that, what are they cutting?
Well, we're, well, we're, we got it, we're. Scribble, does that gonna make a difference? It'll be, we can keep that copy here.
Okay.
I put them in front.
Okay, we're at eleven o'clock, and we're obviously not gonna wait for, we'll we'll dress that at eleven, so we're gonna do a discussion, so. Michelle, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I didn't get a chance to meet you last week, I'm bad with that.
Ted, I'm Carol Ditt.
So I did bring in some additional information, I knew you weren't here last time, I did talk to Lonnie and Richard. Uh, I have some questions, concerns about our assessments in most of them. Uh, I'm not gonna go, I'm not gonna rehash what we already talked about, because we already talked about it quite good. You see an email, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so I've got some more stuff here. Christine, I was hoping, uh, uh, before I I show some of this information to you then, could you define uh the terms coefficient of dispersion and price-related differential for the board?
Yeah, come up here, Christine.
I feel more comfortable back here.
We, I'm sorry, what were the terms you just asked for, Pam?
Coefficient of dispersion and price-related differential. I'm I'm gonna dance this stuff out, it's over, she can.
Okay.
I'll be right now, if you can provide those voices.
The coefficient of dispersion measures the uniformity of assessments in the county. And the PRD, the price-related differences, is measures progressively the high end, or if the high end are over appraised compared to low end and high end properties that are under appraised.
So if if with your uh with your agreement, I just wanna paraphrase that, these are the two main metrics we can look at to find out if our assessments are equitable throughout the county.
It's in a formula, it's not the only thing.
Mm-hmm. No, I I but there are two, like there there are two metrics that we can look at.
Can.
Okay, um, so the first document on there is the uh two thousand eighteen sales, sales ratio study from the state. And on the fourth page, there's a highlighted line where Mills County is.
What year did you say, I'm sorry?
This is the most recent, like two thousand eighteen. Uh, so Mills County, our price-related differential is a hundred and sixteen point one. That number is supposed, if if things are equal, that number is supposed to be between point nine eight and one point zero three. Uh, the C O D, or the coefficient of dispersion, is twenty-seven point eight five. And if all things were, if things were correct, that should be below twenty. So when we look, sorry, and I'm not bouncing around, the first page has the definitions, this is right out of the sales study. Coefficient of dispersion, in general, a coefficient of dispersion in excess of twenty indicates the existence of an inequitable assessment pattern for that particular class of real estate. It's already very cut and dry there as far as I'm concerned. Uh, again, down at the bottom, it talks about a PRD being greater than one or less than one, uh, and what that means. Uh, I'm gonna leave that document, we'll come back here later, but uh the next document is the, is a report from the Mason City Assessor. And I know the Vermills County, but it's just a little peer checking. Uh, on the last page, I highlighted a couple of statements. After their uh, after their reappraisal project, they were trying to get a C O D fifteen or less and a PRD uh between point nine eight or one point oh three. That that's that's where things are supposed to be ideally. Does that make sense? And you don't have to, you do not have to believe it, like, I just want you to listen and then I'd like you to go do some research on your own and just reflect on what I say. That's what I'm asking. Uh, so I also threw in a standard on ratio studies, this is a much larger document, I just printed out the relevant pages. Uh, in this, it talks about the coefficient of dispersion, and on the back page, it talks about what those what those levels should be if things are fair and equal. And it should be, it's five to fifteen in a in a single family residential and older or more heterogeneous areas. It does talk about other residential right below it, rural, five to twenty. Uh, you know, to what extent is Mills County rural and and urban, I mean, clearly it's more rural, right, I I know that. Uh, but I don't know that Glenwood is rural, I I don't know where, I don't. I I don't know where, I don't, you know, it's kind of a gray area yet, right? So rural is, I don't know. Uh, but, but that document outlines where these, where these values should be. So, uh, let's see here. Go on, uh, well, actually, I didn't even hand this one out yet. So what I wanna show you, actually, I only have one copy of this, I'm sorry. This is from the state of Utah right away. So this is actually to be compared in the state of Iowa, and I know that's from Utah, I did know that more in Iowa. But it's a good comparison tool to look at. This is Iowa's sales studies, these are the same numbers. There's their PRDs and there's their CMs. And they're all basically within those windows. Every county in the state, what was, what was surprising to me is how bad Iowa is overall. Iowa's not good overall when compared to Utah. Utah looks like they're completely squared away, Iowa's all red. Uh, again, I'll let you reflect on that down the road. That's just my conclusion from looking at Utah's and Iowa's, I've looked at some other states. So, uh, a couple of things. Is this graph in there? Forget if I'm reading that graph, I. Let's look at one micro example, then I have a, a few things I wanna share with you, just a few graphs and my conclusions. So I put in this, I know this is small writing, I apologize. Uh, this is in the spreadsheet that I've sent to you all as well. So this is, this is, this is Malvern, their sales number included in the two thousand eighteen sales study. Okay, there are homes in here, we already talked about this, their sales ratios are between thirty-six percent and three hundred and fourteen percent of market value. That's a pretty big range. Now, those three at the bottom that are highlighted red, I highlighted them red because there's clearly something with those properties, right? And then when we look at the sales price, they sold for twenty-seven, twenty-six and twenty-one thousand. That looks to me like they were probably rehab rentals, right? Homes that sold bottom barrel, um, and that's probably, you know, bottom as a fixer upper. So they don't really truly represent, you know, a good market price. They're not good statistical data points because the assessment was, you know, sixty, seventy thousand dollars and you're selling for twenty thousand. There's a reason for that, I assume. I bring this up primarily though to illustrate, now here in the yellow. In Malvern specifically, the bottom eleven homes make up sixty percent of the market on, in this sales study. The top eleven homes make up thirty-eight percent of the market. What that means then is that we're taking our most expensive homes in Malvern and assessing them below market value. And taking our, our, our least expensive homes in Malvern and assessing them above market value. We're signing them, right? That's important because in Oak, it's completely flip-flopped. I don't have a similar spreadsheet here. But based on what I'm looking at, the rules are flip-flopped. So the higher homes in Oak are assessed higher than the lower-priced homes. Does that make sense? So there's many different ways that we're transferring tax burden in this country and that's, that's one of them. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a step back now, I'm gonna hand out another graph. This is the certificate of dispersion for Mills County since two thousand and eleven. Okay, and actually, there's Mills County, uh, Winneeshake, I don't know if I'm pronouncing that correctly. And Bremer Counties, uh, compared with the Iowa median and the, the Iowa standard and the industry standard of twenty and fifteen. So, as you can see, Mills County is really high right now, like, really high. What I'm having a hard time understanding is why Bremer consistently has a COD below fifteen and ours is pretty consistently above twenty.
Do you know what the population of Bremer?
They are very comparable. I did, we're fifteen, one of them is twenty, the other one's twenty-five. I think that's comparable. Uh, and that's why I picked those counties. Uh, so I could do the same graph in every county. And it's true that there are counties in Iowa that are worse than Mills, that's true. But that doesn't make them, you know, fall failing, that isn't really, that's not really a good thing. Lastly, uh, I've got another graph here. So I went last night and I took the four major metrics here. And this is COD, PRD, coefficient of variation, standard deviation, okay? And I took every single county for every single year back to two thousand and eleven. And and I, and I, and I ordered them by each factor. Okay, so for us, right now in two thousand and eighteen, Mills County is sitting in the fifteenth percentile. Meaning we're, meaning, uh, I'm sorry, for, for COD, for coefficient of dispersion, we're in the fifteenth percentile, meaning we're the fifteenth worst. I'm sorry, fifty percent, do you understand what I'm saying there? I said fifteen percent. Uh, for PRD, we're in the eighth percentile. For standard deviation and coefficient of variation, we're in the sixth percentile. So what that means is that we're just about the worst in the state. Not the worst, but really close. And and this graph shows you what's happened over the last decade to all those values. That's our relative position within the state of Iowa against our peers. We have gotten worse and worse and worse. And and I can't ever say that we were ever really good. Now, if if, now Christina would be able to tell us more for exactly. We, I believe we did a full reassessment in two thousand and eleven, is that right? Is that third?
Eleven, yeah.
Okay. So, so when we fixed our problem, we still really weren't all that fixed. When you go over here and look at Mason City, and you see right here, here's their, here's their comparison before and after. After their reappraisal project, their PRD was one point zero two and their COD was seven point six one. I mean, they were, they were money, right? They were right on. Now, again, there's gonna be some deviation over time, I think everybody knows that, but that's going to happen. I'm not, we're not asking for perfection, but the question is, is it okay to be in the bottom fifteen percent?
I don't feel we are Ted with your numbers.
Okay, well, you could do the math yourself, we are in the bottom fifteen percent. The, the, the numbers are the numbers, okay? It is what it is. So I spent the morning talking to a lady named Julie Hoysen at the state. Do you know Julie? Okay. So Julie and I had about an hour-long conversation. Now Julie does not have all this information. I mean, she's just, she's at the stages and know what's going on in Mills County. She said, assuming what you're telling me is true, that's all she can do on the follow-up, I'm not saying it properly. Assuming you're telling me, assuming what you're telling me is true, then it sounds like your county has some, has some significant issues. So, and if there's nothing much I can do past this point, I've shown you how bad this county's assessments are. And I don't even think that we can debate anymore that our assessments aren't, are, are, are inequitable. They are, I've proven it. And and I've shown you that we're really bad amongst our peers. We're a bad county and a bad state. I mean, and we don't have to be, we don't have to be. I don't want to be, I don't, do you wanna be? Do you? So what I'm, you know what I'm asking, I've already asked you. I want a clear and decisive plan, I want a clear and decisive action on the part of the board and the assessor in this county to fix this problem. I know it can't be fixed overnight. This is way too big of a problem for me. But I'm asking for a plan and I wanna know what we're going to do to fix this. And again, I don't expect you to, to just, you know, I expect you to go home, reflect on this, look at it, listen to what I'm saying and then come to a conclusion as a board or individually, however you guys did work, and then do something about it. Is that reasonable? And then, well, the separate issue is my house, so we'll deal with that down the road. I absolutely believe I'm being overtapped significantly. Probably seven hundred and fifty to fifteen hundred per year. The problem is, our data is so, like, there's so many factors here that I can't say that definitively, I don't, you know, you can't say it definitively. But I do know that we've looked at comparable homes around the area. My home is assessed at a way higher percentage of market value than other homes. Like, I've demonstrated that in the spreadsheet that I sent you. So, again, we'll deal with my, my house in a separate issue, I'm here because of this issue. You, I believe, this, this entity can influence the conference board and the assessor into fixing this problem.
What's going through my head right now that is, you understand the tax dollars, doesn't it?
Yes, he, he doesn't care about schools, anything that's.
Right.
Valuation.
Right. Because a lot of them don't understand it, that tax dollars pay your new school and the pool and the sports complex and all that.
Yeah, I told you sport, I told you sport paying taxes, I wanna pay my fair share in taxes.
Right, right.
And, and that's all I want, I wanna pay my fair share and what you're doing, not intentionally, I don't think you're intentionally doing it. I, I think there's an element of, maybe we're just not doing a very good job of it. You told me two weeks ago, you're doing your job right and I just don't think these numbers support that.
Ted, I wasn't here last week when you were in, but I had a question for you. When you went to, um, when you went in to discuss your concerns with the, I should say, when you met with the board, the board of review, but you had attorney do it for you?
Yeah, so, I did not meet with the board.
Okay, you had an attorney.
That's right. In hindsight, I would've done way more homework then. Like, I was told that, oh, everybody's assessments went up, so the way we do taxes, if everybody's assessment's going fifteen percent, then it doesn't matter, right? Everybody in the county's going fifteen percent. The, you guys set the budget and you divvy up taxes, if everybody went up fifteen percent, it should be pretty equal if everybody was equal, right? Well, the problem is, nobody in the county went up fifteen percent. I didn't realize that at the time, I just looked at my neighbors. Oh, yep, sure enough, everybody's assessment's went up fifteen percent, so I dropped it. But then when the bills came out, of course, wow, I got a lot more taxes here, what happened? Well, then I started looking into things, I'm not gonna rehash everything. There, there's at least four or five different ways that I'm on the wrong end of this deal in this county right now. Things like Malvern being assessed at eighty-three percent of market value while my, my area is at ninety-six percent. That's like, you're shifting excellent from one area to another. Things like, in my own neighborhood, there's, 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 there's a range of values, okay? And in my own neighborhood, I'm, I'm above the median, not much, I'm just about the median. But I am, I'm still on the wrong side of that equation. When I go back to my old neighborhoods too, we talked about this yesterday a lot. My old neighborhood is in Brooklyn, Nebraska and Hornet County, North Carolina. And that's, this is in that spreadsheet as well. Every single home, not every one, sorry, there were a couple outliers, but removing the top and bottom value, every home was within an eleven percent range of market value. Okay, not perfect, but consistent.
Consistent.
You know what? If you're within, if there's a plus or minus five percent, I think people can live with. The problem is, we're plus or minus fifteen, twenty, or, yeah, plus or minus twenty percent in some cases, that's a forty percent swing. I, I don't know how we can justify that. I don't think we can. And this requires constant vigilance to not happen again. So the question is, what are we gonna do now? What are we gonna do to fix it and then what are we gonna do to make sure it doesn't happen in the future? Because that's really truly what I'm concerned about. This shouldn't happen. Oh. I don't have much else, say again?
Very interesting.
Well, thank you, let's say, I, I, are, are my, is my request clear right now? Just, I wanna make sure. Okay, I, what is a reasonable timeframe for the board to take a look at this to determine if action is necessary? And to, and to get back to me with an answer, yes, it's necessary, and we're gonna create a plan over the next, I'm just gonna give you an example. Hey, you know what? We think, we think we do need to fix it and it's gonna take us two months to come up with a plan. And we're gonna get you that plan in two months, like this.
Is Van Der Duin's reappraisal coming up? Are they gonna?
They are. Like Mason County report that we have here, that was to, for her to be able to get a reappraisal. You guys have already, with the conference board, have already committed to doing the reappraisal. And the only way we can do it is the sales ratio study, you know, in mass appraisal. That is how it is done across the state. My law that I have to go by is chapter four, four, one. The rules of how I have to administrate this is chapter seventeen of the Iowa Administrative Code. I am overseen by the state. Every sale that we have goes to the state. And I believe Ted, I gave you the state, all the sales that went to the state.
At least to Malvern and Oak, I believe, right? Or did, was that the second one you just sent me? You just sent me something yesterday, okay?
And all of them were given to you. Um, we do not have problem to the extent you are saying. We disagree.
So.
Does this board really have?
No.
I don't think they have.
Yeah, what?
Ted, you went to the board of review.
We talked about this yesterday, okay? The conference board does not meet, but what? Once a year, that's what you say. This is the only place to go. Okay, the state, this is interesting by the way, not a deal, it's just a fact. The state does not care if we are equitably assessed within the county. They do not care in any way, shape or form, okay? All they care about, and the reason they issue equalization orders, is that each county is, is basically assessed at market value. Because what they do, they use that, they use the data collected there to disperse state aid out. And they wanna make sure, they wanna make sure that aid is dispersed equitably. That's why the state wants us to win that, every county. But they don't care about individual properties. They don't care that Malvern's assessed at eighty-three percent and Oak is at ninety-six percent. They do not care at all. We should, I do, I definitely care about it. This, this sales ratios, or this uh, real estate reappraisal project, that takes two years. It's gonna take two to three years for that to be reflected in my property taxes. That's not okay with me. It shouldn't be okay with me, like, there's gotta be some other way, some interim measure? Yes, that, that real, or, that project needs to be done, clearly. But there needs to be some interim fixes too, because it's not okay. If you believe this, then it's not okay to keep overtaxing people for the next two or three years. I, I don't think it is, because I'm gonna be the victim there.
Ted, you can do an appraisal to come into the board of review and definitely mark to do an oral hearing. Because when your lawyer.
If I do an appraisal, you said I have to, if I did an appraisal on the property?
Right, a deal appraisal.
Okay, the problem is, I've already told you a thousand times, she doesn't, she's not listening to me. My home is assessed correctly. My home is assessed at market value. It seems, and I'm just throwing out a number here, sixty-five percent of the county is below market value. Yeah, I don't, I don't have the entire database, I don't, just based on the research I've done, there's a lot of people that are assessed under market value. So what good is it gonna do me to come in and say, look, I have this appraisal, my house says it's worth four hundred and fifty thousand, oh, look, you're assessed at four fifty, axing. That's what they're gonna tell me. So the problem is, I'm challenging everybody else's assessment, not mine. Nobody's gonna come in and say, man, I'm assessed at half my market value. Have you ever heard anybody complain about that? Nobody does that. So that's what I'm here doing, I'm complaining that they are assessed at half their market value. I've given you all the evidence, I don't think there needs, I'm not gonna continue to beat this network. We are inequitably assessed, the facts are clear. The question is, what are we gonna do about it? Again, there needs to be an interim measure, there needs to be a, a fix, which is the real estate reappraisal project. And then some mechanism on which the county ensures this doesn't happen again. So let me ask you, we've been above this twenty percent threshold, sorry, this graph. Our COD's been above twenty percent, where, where the state of Iowa says that things are beginning to get inequitable. We've been there since two thousand and fourteen. What have we done since two thousand and fourteen about it?
We assess every two years. We put sales ratios together, the only way we can do it without a reappraisal. And then we, because you can't put the same increase on Malvern as you can like on five.
Did you, did you ask, okay, going back over, do you remember, well, did you, did you ask in two thousand and fourteen for a reappraisal project when our COD was over twenty?
No, I don't believe I did.
Maybe she should've. Maybe she should've, like, hey, board, here you go, look, look at the sales study, it says we're inequitable.
When did we have our last appraisal?
Eleven.
Eleven, right.
And if you think we can afford more every three years, get your checkbook out.
If you think, my checkbook's already out, Richard, it's already out, man!
It's gonna get a lot worse if we're gonna have an appraisal every three years.
Then maybe, maybe, okay. Lonnie, Richard, why does Winneeshake County, why does Bremer County do so much better than Mills County? Maybe we should send Christine over there and figure out what they're doing. How can you guys be so darn good at this and we're so darn poor? Like, do some benchmarking, that's a pretty affordable option. Again, I don't know what they're doing, I'm not a professional appraiser, I'm not a, a professional assessor, that's Christine's job. Although I've learned more in the last month about this than I ever thought I would. So, this can be fixed. This is not okay to tax me hundreds, thousands more than I should be, you're not even looking at me, Richard. Please, consider what I'm saying and please fix this. Okay, I don't need to monopolize anymore of your day. I have monopolized more than enough of your time, I'm sorry to flood your email boxes. Have, have I made my point? Okay. When can I expect to hear back? When can I expect to hear back from you? When is a reasonable timeframe?
I, I don't know right now if we can put down, I mean, we gotta do a lot of reading and studying and calling, I, I.
Look, okay, give me a follow-up schedule, I just want, all I want you to do is commit the following up with me on a regular basis. And, and, I'm, I'm letting you define the time here. And, like, okay, I don't know when I can give you an answer, but I'm gonna follow up with you every two weeks to let you know where we're at. Because I'll tell you what, like, it's, would you all agree that a year is too long here? Like, I'm asking for an answer before a year, okay? A week is probably too short. There's some reasonable timeframe here, a month or two I would think at most, that you could get, that you could make a decision on this. You know, spend a couple of weekends on it, I know what I did. I will, I will send you Julie's information, her email, because, or, I mean, again, I, this is a different language too. This is a different language. Being, you know, the ling, the lingo they use in the, in the assessment world is completely different than the way we normally talk with one another. They, they throw out terms that you just, you don't intuitively know what they mean. Who knows what coefficient of dispersion is? I didn't two weeks ago, but I do now, and I understand its relevance. I don't expect you to just know everything, it take, it does take time, so, please take the time. Again, I've already said this, and I, I don't wanna put words, you know, I don't know what you're talking about. Is every two weeks reasonable? Are you getting in touch with me to tell you, or to basically say, we're working on this and I'm gonna get back to you with an answer? Is that reasonable? If not, tell me what's reasonable, just give me a, yeah.
Give us a month.
Okay.
Give us a month.
A month for an answer?
To see where our plan is, what, what we do, what.
Okay, okay, I will give you a month to get back to me with something. I would say that I would like, I'm, this is my expectation as an actuary. I'm asking for a plan within the next quarter. And this is a significant issue, and I'm gonna write a check, I don't, I'm, I'm, dollars are coming out of my checking account, and I don't think it's fair. And I'm gonna pay them, because I don't really have a choice. I like my house, okay? So, uh, one month. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am a neighbor in the, well, not yet, I'm building a house in Lake Ahana, and I've been following the emails and all. Partly moved here, this is supposed to be a low-income, you know, general state compared to where I came from. I came from Virginia. And my property tax for a $450,000 house, well, actually, 460, I guess I sold it for, uh, was $3,600 a year. So, when these emails started flying, I'm going, uh, how can they be so high here? So I am hoping as a new resident to see some, through the emails he's been sharing with us, some results that, that don't scare me that I've made the main, wrong mistake to come to, to Iowa. I have family here, and I've, you know, wanted to be here with them, and I thought, oh, this'll be great. It's not gonna cost me as much to live here as it did in Virginia. Well, now I'm questioning that, so, please, you know, take a look. I mean, when you start talking about tax on a house being $8,000, not two, two and a half times what I'm used to paying on taxes, so, you know, somewhere, I, I don't know quite what, all you're spending it on, but I do understand, and I was a teacher for 46 years, it was my salary coming in. Uh, and I know how many things, you know, you have more trouble with roads, we didn't, we don't have the extremes where I was living, so. I know you have the roads to patch, and you have the police and the fire department, which I adore. Police pay them and send them out when we need them. But, uh, I, I just look, and if somebody's paying 65 below, you've gotta make that money up. I know you've gotta have a pool this big. And, so if they're paying technically 25% less, then somebody's paying 25% more. So, I would love to see this even out, I just, I've never done, I've never, well, I take that back. I did go to the city council when they tried to not give us a raise as a teacher, but this is the first time I've been in anything other than. So I, I do hope, you know, you'll, you'll think about those of us who are looking at our, our yearly bill, houses paid for, sort of thing, and it's a big chunk when, when you're not doing it a little bit each month, all of a sudden you really realize how much it is. I thank you for your time, I, I appreciate you letting me sit in and listen.
Thank you. I would encourage, just, I'm, we are no longer impartial parties, right? I would encourage you both to reach, or all of you, to reach out to impartial, call people from the state, call somebody from those counties, ask them. Because those are the people that, you know, that.
Alrighty, it's 11 o'clock, next item on the agenda is the. Possible or closed session for. Where is it, for real estate, for Iowa Code, chapter 21.51 J.
I would make a motion to go into closed session at 11 o'clock, according to. Iowa Code 21.5.1 J.
My second thought?
We've got a motion and a second, we want a closed session, is there any discussion? Hearing non-hallows in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, Crouch?
Yes.
Mitten?
Yes.
Mayberg?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm through this process.
Oh yeah.
It's a process.
Alright.
I'm gonna start off with a motion here, Lonnie, maybe. My motion would be that we make a list, to be removed from the buyout list of properties, we have here 10 of them. Take the list provided to Home Land Security and SUCO. You know, whoever needs one, and then move two properties up, right? Got some letters and patents, two? And we don't want to put anything in a NIM on this motion, do we?
Yeah, it's very simple, we're going the way we're drawn, so.
Okay.
My second thought?
We've got a motion, any second. Is there any discussion? Hearing non-hallows in favor?
Aye.
Alright.